One sec, I gotta move over.
We're just gonna wait. Thanks, Joe. Welcome to the Select Board meeting of December 4th. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So tonight's meeting is being recorded and livestreamed by ECAT, our local cable station, and it is a Zoom meeting. So if people are watching from home and they have a question, they can put their question in the Q and A. Sean will be monitoring that and he'll let us know if we do have anything. If you do pose a question or you do ask to speak at this meeting, we need to know your name and address. So with that, I'm just gonna ask the Select Board to introduce themselves to ensure we have a quorum.
Sure, I'm Jennifer Stacy.
I'm Dottie Full Genetti.
I'm Craig Barger.
And then we have our Town Administrator Connor Reed and Assistant Town Administrator Sean Dugan. So we're gonna get right into this. Our first item is a timed item. It's a continuation of a public hearing for consideration to exercise a right of first refusal under Mass. General Law Chapter 61A, Section 14, and possible purchase regarding 69 Howard Street. We, the Town Administrator is speaking with the property owner and we're gonna ask for a continuance to December 18th at 7:00 PM.
If that's what I would recommend, yes.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
No.
All right. Would somebody like to make a motion to continue this hearing to December 18th at 7:00 PM?
So moved, Barger.
Second, Stacy.
Barger and Stacy, and I think this is a roll call vote, so.
Stacy, yes.
Full Genetti, yes.
Barger, yes.
Okay, great, thank you. 6:30 is our next public hearing, so we're gonna take some items before that while we wait for that. The first one will be an announcement and proclamations for a distinguished budget presentation award for the fiscal year '24 budget from the Government Finance Officers Association, otherwise known as the GFOA.
Sure, thank you, Dottie. I know Finance Director Nightingale is joining us later tonight for the fiscal '24 tax hearing, but I am happy to take this. So the town, as part of our kind of financial management best practices, we adhere to a national set of standards from the Government Finance Officers Association, which lays out certain qualitative and quantitative metrics you wanna have in any kind of operating and capital budget so that you're accurately communicating your operating and capital budget as well as your financial trends to the public, both as a policy document, a communication tool, an important transparency record. And so that's something that all of our departments, including the schools, work with us on. That involves submitting kind of plain English narratives of what our operations are going to do along with year-over-year trends with our staffing levels, our revenues, our expenditures, our liabilities. And although every department does a lot of work for that, it really is spearheaded by the Finance Director Wendy Nightingale to help pull all that together every year. And I don't know if this is our third or fourth year of getting this, but for numerous years now, we've been able to receive this national award, which is a wonderful thing and testament to the commitment of not only the board and the town and the schools, but all of our departments as well to having really well-thought-out, thoughtful operating and capital budgets that contain an accounting of every penny of public money.
I think it's the fourth year and I know that this has been really well-received by people in the public that have taken the time to look at it. It is posted online every year. And it's really more than, you know, when you think of a budget, you think of just like numbers on a piece of paper. But this really, this book tells a story. Each department talks about what they did last year with the tax dollars to make their department more efficient and better servicing. And then they talk about what they want to do for the next fiscal year. So it really does give great insight into what the departments do as well. And one of the things that I really liked about it when we first did this is the organizational chart. You know, it's very interesting if you look at that in the beginning to see what departments there are and how they're connected with each other and how the elected and appointed connect also with those departments. It's a tremendous amount of work.
Yes.
And so I really wanna thank Wendy and before that, Michael Blanchard, and now Sean, everybody in the finance team. It's a lot of work, but I think it's well worth it. I looked in fiscal year '23. I wanted to see who else won the fiscal '24 awards for Massachusetts and they aren't published in a list yet. But for fiscal year '23, out of the 351 cities and towns, there were 16. 16, so, I mean, it's really great work for our team, so.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions, Jen?
No, it's a really huge accomplishment to consistently communicate this information in a way that's so accessible to the masses and really just laid out perfectly, very easy to navigate. As someone who does spend a portion of my time in budgets and whatnot, I find that it was that the ease of picking up and understanding the story and the pieces of the story was just, you know, was very, very simple. So it just goes to show you don't have to overcomplicate things and get information out there in a way that's presentable, readable, and impactful, so.
I hope the public that's watching takes the time to take a look at it. It's very well done.
Terrific. All right, and we'll thank Wendy again
if she's here.
If she comes in later in the meeting. Okay, I'm just gonna go in order under action and discussion. The first one is to vote to authorize Superintendent Lisa Cabral to sign the memorandum of understanding Every Student Succeeds Act, which is transportation claiming under Title IV-E of the Social Security Act. Come on up.
Table, if that's okay. Is there only one chair? We could pull more chairs. How many folks do you have coming on? Three. Three. Go first, okay. Sorry.
Thank you.
Good.
Good, thank you. Good evening, thank you for having us. I'm joined by Director of Student Services, Craig Davidson. The McKinney-Vento Act requires public schools in Massachusetts to have students who are homeless or under foster care attend the school even if they may have left the school and are residing in a shelter or doubling up in another town. And we also are required to provide transportation back to our district until they have permanent housing again. So we do have several students that fall under this. Unfortunately, we have, we had anticipated an expense of about $80,000 for that transportation this year and we have found that all of our transportation costs, including special education, general education, and McKinney-Vento students, has accelerated significantly. And so in looking for ways to subsidize this cost that we anticipate already this year to be about $150,000, Mr. Davidson has researched this MOU that makes it possible for us to get up to 30% reimbursement, potentially. But it requires me, you, to authorize me as the LEA to sign off on this. But I'll have Mr. Davidson explain this, what this is, in a little more detail and we'll answer any questions you may have.
Okay, great.
That's the overarching purpose of us looking for this.
Thank you.
So the Department of Education, along with Department of Child and Family Services, had a joint MOU put in place for school districts that were facing extreme situations regarding transportation costs. The MOU, as Dr. Cabral said, gives us an opportunity to apply for a reimbursement program as part of that process. What we have to do as a school district is use what our data points are, what our travel costs are for the transportation vans, and then apply for the reimbursement each March. So we would use our SIMS reporting data, use the numbers that we have within the school district for transportation costs and then apply for the reimbursement. Depending on the funds that are available, we could receive up to 20% to 30% reimbursement rate, but it's not a guarantee.
Okay.
It's also a one-time MOU, as of right now. So if the Select Board gives Dr. Cabral permission and votes it through tonight, she would access that MOU. It would go to the Department of Education and Department of Child and Family Services. They would then sign off on it and we would have to provide the information each March.
Okay. Do you have any questions, Jen?
No, it seems straightforward. If they actually have a question, but I'm not sure what to ask, so.
Craig?
Can you explain again, Dr. Cabral, kids who are in the school system, they leave the school system because they move somewhere else, but it's not, it's a temporary?
If they, so if a student, any student anywhere in Massachusetts, if they become homeless, wherever they have their temporary residence might not be in the town that they were going to school in. What the Department of Education does is go back to the last district they were enrolled in and that district is responsible for their education and their transportation to the district for that education. So they may be in an emergency assistance shelter. They may be in a homeless shelter. They may be in an EA, like a hotel. They may be doubling up with family in another town. We have students that are coming from several towns away, but we're responsible for keeping the consistency of their education until they get permanent housing, wherever that may be. Once they show that they have permanent housing, whatever town that's in, they then assume responsibility for the child's or the children's education.
So foster care would be included in this?
Yes, correct.
And the reason for that is the whole goal of foster care is reunification with the parents or guardians, the original parents or guardians. And so it's really temporary. There's no guarantees on where that child will end up. But the goal is always to return to Easton with their families.
The least disruption is possible to their education.
Thank you.
So this program reimburses 20% to 30% of that budget line item, not your whole transportation cost, just that budget line. Okay, great. Well, thanks for researching that and finding that. It's every, every bit helps and it sounds like that was, that's gonna be really great to help with the budget. I hope they continue it on because it's a problem, like you said, for every community. I don't mean, it's a budget problem. It's, I think it's great that we're able to have people, have their children be transported safely to the school that they should be in, so.
We certainly understand the reason. It becomes unfunded mandates.
Right.
And so these are attempts to try to mitigate the effect of that. It doesn't completely help the problem, but like you noted, we're trying to do everything we can to piece together ways that we can account for these unaccounted-for expenses.
Okay, well, if you need a letter of support or anything from us, let us know.
Just authorization.
Excellent.
Thank you.
All right, Craig, do you wanna make a motion?
So I move to authorize Superintendent Lisa Cabral to sign memorandum of understanding Every Student Succeeds Act, transportation claiming under Title IV-E, the Social Security Act.
Second.
That's Barger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have a discussion and vote. Blanche Ames Elementary School, Break Builders Corp., project change order number 15.
Sure, so while Walter makes his way up, just for the board's edification, this is the 15th kind of change order bundle, excuse me, under the technical review committee process established by the school planning committee and the Select Board years back when we were in the design and then construction phase of the Blanche Ames Elementary School. The TRC through PMA negotiate what they deem to be fairly priced or reasonably priced change orders necessary to wrap up a project and rather than come back to the board for, you know, each individual item on a project this size would be very burdensome, they group them together every few months or so. So Walter's here to answer any questions, but information was included in your packet, a detailed list of what the change authorizations were.
Yep. So, thanks for having us. At this point, with the execution of change order 15, 65% of owner contingency will have been expended. There's 5% being held for known risk right now. That's about five to seven other PCOs, three of which are tied together and only one of them would go through. So it is much lower than that 5%. And those are being worked on as we move towards the end of the year. Some items have to wait to be completed to, for students to be out of classrooms, for teachers to be out of classrooms, just so they're not being intrusive. But running through the PCOs that are carried in change order 15, we have PCO 139 for corridor lighting conflicts. We've been back and forth with the general contractor on this PCO for over a year. We did finally get it down from what started around $7,000 to $10,000, down to just under $4,000, so 3907. The second PCO, 154A, this is actually a piece of PCO that was previously approved. That was, this is the final touch-up, so this is the painting and caulking at the door that was added, developmental skills room. So that PCO was tracked on time and materials basis and PMA confirmed that work. PCO 164 for additional exit sign changes. These are very, very typical on almost every job when the building inspector and/or fire department walk through. Their interpretation of the code may be different. They just may wanna see other exit signs in other areas. So we always have PCOs that carry costs to add exit signs like that. It's to make sure that every student, every teacher, anyone in the building can see an exit when they get out into an hallway and lead them to a safe path of exit. PCO 182B, this is for rail extensions at Phase 1B. If you've been over to the school, you can see that the Blanche Ames School is tied into both the middle school and Richardson Olmsted. These ramps that were in those locations did not meet code. Our project boundary really didn't mesh well with where those projects, where those schools ended. So in order to make the entire campus and those ramps that we were tying into ADA and MAB compliant, we needed to extend some of those ramps. We needed to add handrails at some of those ramps. So I think it was four different locations that there was additional asphalt, additional concrete, and additional steel that was placed to make those areas compliant. PCO 188, this is the caps, excuse me, the precast cap repairs and caulking. It was not repairs. It was actually just caulking added at these locations. They were gonna be fully grouted. They were grouted, but then we noticed that they needed to be caulked for an exterior look to make sure no one was getting anything inside of them. So that cost is related to the time materials that it took for the caulker to go around at each of those and finish the work there. That was not carried on the drawing, so it was an addition. PCO 215A, this is the remainder of the time materials that was approved by the school, the school committee for the scoreboard that was approved. It's up and installed, working, functional. But this was the excavation, concrete, and also the install of that scoreboard for $14,469. PCO 218, pedestrian bridge grades and handrail. There was no handrail carried at the pedestrian bridge walking over to the playground in the front of the building. And there was a grade bust on the handrail as well. I'm sorry, on the bridge as well to make that ADA compliant. So because of the slope of that bridge and the work that needed to be done, the handrail needed to be added. So specialty steel, they need to go in, specialty footings that need to be drilled through the precast, vertical granite curb. PCO 234, electrical plumbing waterproofing hookup of the HVAC unit at the wastewater treatment plant. That was the final piece of that scope over there to really cap off, excuse me, what was really a secondary scope that was completed, summer slammer last summer. But the unit that was approved finally got installed and all of those connections were completed for $12,389. PCO 239B and 239C for $2,500 and $3,800 were both after in-use, in-use sessions of the school. These canopies, the runoff from these roofs were just a little bit too heavy, so they were having washouts. So there needed to be some remediation of some stone pavers. There were some pathways that students were using that really needed to be a hardscape so that they weren't kicking dirt and mulch and walking through just dirt areas. So there was architectural stones added and then there was also excavation completed and rock mulch beds put in. The splashing was contained and wasn't washing out actual mulch. So those were functionality that needed to be changed, not owned in the contract, but really a necessity in order to not have messes and cleanup during the winter and during the spring. PCO 242, mechanical room graphics. This was a dispute that had been ongoing between a couple of different trades and the general contractor. It was determined that really couldn't tie out to anyone. So ASI 46 was issued for the mechanical room graphics to label the piping so that that can be, area can be used as a building, as a teaching tool, the flow and the pressurization of those and then the painting on some of the piping as well. So that was carried for $9,700. PCO 245 and 247 really tied together, wastewater treatment fencing. I'm sorry, they don't tie together. They're just fencing-related. Wastewater treatment fence in order to protect the HVAC unit that's on the back. That was an added cost. Again, the whole HVAC unit was an added piece of that scope as well. So in order to protect that and stop anyone from being able to get in there and kinda mess with the unit, there was a six-foot fence added at that location. PCO 247 was really a coordination in the field. There was a PCO changing and adding fencing at the leaching field play area. Unfortunately, there was just a lot of stuff going on in the summer and direction was not clear out in the field versus what was going on. So that was downtime for the entire fencing crew. They were down for a half day waiting for the new locations of that fence to come out from the engineer. PMA did verify that that fence was not going in at that time, so that were, those were actual downtime costs that they incurred. That was $6,500. PCO 248 was based upon, really, the building relabeling that took place. This was recommended and highly encouraged to be completed from fire department and from building inspector. And that relabeled all the equipment, the electrical equipment in the building so that in the future, someone goes in to use that building or you have a new building inspector, you have a new electrical inspector, a new electrician, town electrician in town, they're gonna be able to see and not have to reference the cover page on the drawings. They'll know that where these panels are fed from, where they're going to, and there won't be any question or confusion. This was what I was speaking to before, was really taking some time to complete. They're going in after hours so that they're not interrupting anyone from the school since it was an add. So they're doing after-hours work to work with everyone and David Twomley has been great coordinating the custodians. So that works wrapping up should be complete in the next week or two, if it's not already. PCO 249, elevator two, emergency power. This was a request to have both elevators on that emergency power. Not by, not a code requirement, but a nice-to-have, but now both elevators will have that emergency transfer switch. They'll go onto the generator when power goes down. Originally, and by code, you only needed one, but felt that it was a good worthwhile money spent to have both on there. That was $3,700. And then last was PCO 250. If anyone has been in the gym, the traverse wall, the pads that cover up that area. There's actually a sensor on one of the chases for the HVAC system. It's popping off every time those pads were coming off. So that was changed from a sensor with a grate cover to a blanked-out sensor. It still reads, but it's just a flush cover and was changed so that there's no issues with that and breaking in the future. So that is all the PCOs for change order 15. And just a quick update on the building. We have our, that PCO for relabeling inside the building. Once that wraps up, I believe we are wrapping up with our commissioning punch list from our 10-month warranty walkthrough that was in September. Once that's complete, we'll get our final commissioning report from the commissioning agent. That'll be submitted to, as part of the lead submission for the lead certification for the building. That is a process that does take a few months to go through. There's a volley back and forth between the review. They ask for more information. We give that to them. They may come back one more time after that, but it is a couple of months' process before that's complete. And once that's complete, we'd be able to submit to the MSBA for our final closeout. So I think we're probably three to four months before any type of closeout process begins with the MSBA. And then from there, it's really on the MSBA's timeline when they get us on a board date to close that project out.
So when do you think we'll be finished with seeing any change orders?
I'm hoping that the next time, before the new year, I'd like to wrap up the last change order. I'd like to have one last change order. I think we have between five and seven open PCOs right now that we're negotiating. And like I said, there's three of those that are kinda tied into one together, so.
Okay. When you talk about the lead certification, I was on the subcommittee that talked about that and it's pretty complex how that's done. And I remember there were certain things that were gonna be a real challenge. Do you have any idea which level of certification you're submitting for?
Yep, I believe it's silver. I will confirm that.
That's what we thought then.
But I believe it's silver and I believe 52 points is required to get silver certification and I think we're tracking 56. But I wanna confirm that.
Okay, great. That's, that's great.
Yeah.
It's a big deal.
Absolutely.
Awesome.
It's part of our reimbursement and closeout with the MSBA.
Great. Any comments, questions?
None for me. Thank you for the very thorough explanation. Yes, it's very helpful.
Absolutely.
All right. Craig, do you wanna make a motion to authorize the project change order 15?
So moved, Barger.
Second, Stacy.
Barger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next. Vote to accept, oh, are we close at 6:30?
Three minutes.
Three minutes. This is ministerial, so you have time for item six if you would like, Dottie. This is ministerial, so you have time for item six, if you would like, Dottie.
All right, why don't we do item six, then? Vote to accept the easement deed for Barron Drive and Cooper Lane?
Sure, thank you. So there is a memo in your packet, a very brief one, from Director of Planning and Economic Development, Stephanie Danielson, recommending the board vote to accept the deed, acceptance of easement deed for Barron Drive and Cooper Lane for the board's edification. This was an item that was on your special town meeting warrant from November thirteenth, recommended by the planning board and Public Works. Town meeting voted to authorize the select board to accept the easement. This is now the final step to do so. So I would recommend that you vote to accept the deed and sign the deed and as-built plans that are attached in your packet, and we have hard copies in the office.
So just when we, when we have an acceptance of an easement deed, this also includes the as-built plan endorsed by the planning and zoning board? So that just assures that this easement is properly constructed and, and in good condition for the town to take it over?
That's right.
Okay. Any questions, Jen?
No, very straightforward.
Craig?
No.
All right, you want to make the motion?
Move to accept the easement deed for Barron Drive and Cooper Lane.
Second.
That's Barger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous, excellent. All right.
Dottie, some of our guests are not here yet. The hearing doesn't have to open immediately at six-thirty, and there's only one other item, and it's Wayne. Could I request that we just bump Wayne in?
Sure, is that the coastal engineering Wheaton Farm?
Yes, it is.
Okay, we're going to look at contract.
I'm feeling the holiday spirit.
PCD twenty-twenty-four dash oh-three Coastal Engineering Company Wheaton Farm Barn Design. As much as you'd like to join our meetings and this exciting meeting we're having tonight, we'll take you next.
Got to tell you, I actually find it interesting. That's a true statement. Yeah, thank you very much. As it says in the memo, this is for Design Services to do the structural documents for the Wheaton Farm barn. We have finally found a qualified contractor who is qualified to do the work and also willing to enter into a municipal template contract. So it's for twenty-eight thousand dollars. That should leave about a hundred and eighty-some left for the actual construction work, and we're hoping to get that underway over the course of this winter and get it out to bid in spring, summer, and get some of the work done.
Okay. Any questions, Jen, Craig?
This is, the, the work that needs to be done, we can't do all of it at this point, is that what?
We don't have enough money. We've only got the one hundred ninety from the CPA and a little additional funds from Conservation Commission. So it will likely need more money. This will get some of the structural work taken care of. And the proposal is to put it out with ad alternates, or alternate ads, whatever you want to phrase it as, so that we can get the most critical structural issues addressed first, and then if there's additional funds, do additional work. And then, at that point, reconsider where we are with the building and what additional funds might be needed, and how we could do additional fundraising, whether it be a CPA application, whether it be a friends group, whether it be something that the tenant could consider doing some of the work themselves.
Thank you.
And Wayne, remind the public at home, what is the long-term goal with the Wheaton Barn? So the structural integrity, hopefully, hopefully, we're able through this contract and successive bid to deal with the most pressing structural issues.
Correct, yes.
In a future where, whether this appropriation is sufficient, or this plus the next one if needed, to get it not only structurally sound but open, what, what's its public use?
The public use is for the farmer. Does have a use and a need to return it to better state of usability for its original agricultural purposes. And this is, of course, an important component of the historic landscape in the southern part of Easton, as you come up along the road there. It's the barn for the federal-style house across the road, that's a private residence at this point. And as time goes on, there are fewer and fewer active historic agricultural buildings in use in eastern Massachusetts, and this is one of the last ones that really stands. So the intent is to return it to greater functionality and greater use for the active farming at Wheaton Farm.
Do any of the preservation groups offer any kind of grants like that? Is that really?
Not really, no. We, we have looked into it, and it's, any grant you might get would be for, say, the, the Roundstone Shaker Barn in Hancock. That sort of level of resource, it wouldn't, no, we have tried.
We have no idea what the additional costs to bring it up to code would be at this point?
There is, it could be a couple hundred thousand, it could be significantly less. Part of this exercise will be to figure out what the needs really are and what could feasibly be tackled by the tenant-farmer. It is a barn, so its needs are not that complicated. You need a contractor to do big structural work, but replacing wooden shingle siding, replacing a roof, as long as it's structurally sound, these should not be very expensive construction projects. It's really the structural stuff that's the most pricey component.
Thank you.
All right, Craig, you want to make a motion?
Vote to, motion to approve contract PCD twenty-twenty-four dash oh-three Coastal Engineering Company, the Wheaton Farm Barn Design, total amount of twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Second, Stacy.
That's Barger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous, excellent. Thanks so much, good to see you, Wayne.
Thank you. Take care, be well.
All right, we are ready for the public hearing?
We are.
Craig, if you want to read the public hearing notice?
Absolutely. In accordance with Chapter Forty, Section Fifty-six of the General Laws, the Eastern Select Board will hold a public hearing at six-thirty PM on Monday, December fourth, two thousand twenty-three, in the Colleen A. Corona Boardroom, Eastern Town Office's one thirty-six Elm Street, Northeastern, Mass. Hearing will include a brief presentation on the issue of allocating the local property tax levy among the five property classes for the next fiscal year. Interested taxpayers will have the opportunity to present either oral or written information on these views. Those wishing further information, may contact the Select Board's office.
So it's that time of year again, it feels like we just did this, and this is when we hear from the Assessor's Office and Finance Director to talk about the fiscal year property values and tax rate options. And thank you for being here tonight, Robbie and Wendy.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. It does go faster as we get older. Whether we want it to or not. So the first item, Eastern by the numbers, values by class. Residential saw an increase of twelve point seven percent, which was an increase of, I get ready to read these numbers, five hundred and seventeen million, seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars. Commercial had a slight decrease of two point three-one percent, six million, two seventy-seven, nine forty-six. Industrial had an increase of twelve point nine percent of fifteen million, one fifty-one, six hundred. And personal property had an increase of eighteen point seven percent, or nineteen million, seventeen thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars. The commercial, industrial, personal property saw an overall increase of five point seven percent, which is twenty-seven million, eight ninety-nine eighty-two. And the total valuation of the town increased by five hundred and forty-five million, six hundred and ninety thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars, or eleven point nine percent.
Is there a reason that the commercial went down when the other ones went, all went up?
Yeah, with the commercial, we had a number of inspections done this year, as well as we had some properties that there was demolition of, of the site, such as Turnpike Street and a couple of others. We also, this is our first year, first, not first year, this is our first time going from a three-year to five-year revaluation, and some of the depreciation hit, which knocked down some of the value. So that was what the issues were there.
So if you're saying, so Gulf Country is, I assume, what you're talking about? For, so they ceased to operate as their business, a new warehouse goes in. So the, so next year, the tax valuation will show the new value of the new growth of that building?
Actually, what's nice is that the new construction didn't start till after July first. So the good thing, we'll be able to pick up all the building as new growth. What happens usually when you have a demolition of any kind of building, and then if you have a percentage created in that same year, or it's completed in the same year, the growth isn't just the building, because the way it's looked at is the, the life expectancy of the building that was there before had ended. So when you deduct that out, it lowers the, the amount of growth. So actually, the way it happened this year, for us, it will benefit, because we'll get more growth out of the building for next year.
Well, the industrial and personal property are pretty strong. The personal property seems very strong this year.
The personal property is above, yeah, I think the next one shows.
There's a couple of really large outliers in those areas that they're going to, they'll cover.
Sorry, I'm jumping ahead.
That's okay.
There we go. No, so I'll talk about that before we get to that screen. Personal property, we had a number of counts that increased. The utilities, we had some good increases. So, so that helped with the growth for personal property. Most of the growth is in personal properties from the utilities, whether it be the telecoms, Verizon, for instance, I believe was like nine million dollars in value. You had some others that had some big increases in value. And the others, they're, they're smaller, and there is a screen on here that will show it.
Okay.
So FY twenty-twenty-four residential assessments are as of January first, two thousand twenty-three. So we're looking at calendar year two thousand twenty-two sales. I always get the question, because the tax bill goes out in January twenty-twenty-four, why aren't we looking at twenty-twenty-three sales? Well, if I'm able to predict what the sales are going to be in December, I'm going to be very good. I, I wouldn't be working here, because I'd be making a lot more money somewhere. So i- it's all by, it's all by a date, like an appraisal. When you have a personal appraisal, you have a date and time. The same is true for the towns, and it's always the preceding January first of the fiscal year. Let's see, so single-family median assessment increased twelve percent to five eighty-eight, six hundred. The average assessment for two-family increased fourteen percent to five ninety-five, nine. Three families increased twelve percent to five seventy-two, nine. Two and three families, I mean, many of the, we have not had many sales in the past years. The last, last year, we had a number of two-family sales, and this year, we've had quite a few two-family sales. So that's some of the big adjustments, because we're seeing what the market is actually showing for the sales. Condominiums increased nine percent. The average was three thirty-three, four. The overall residential value increase was eleven point two-six percent. It was eleven point five-eight percent in FY twenty-three.
So this was, this period of time that we're looking at was really when the interest rates started to increase?
Right, and that's one question people have also, and that's another slide we'll get to also. You're hitting all the slides, thank you.
I'll wait till the end.
And I usually talk about what we're looking at in the future. I mean, a number of people have said, well, you know, interest rates went up, so the value should be going down. Well, you would think that the values would be going down. What's happening, what has been happening is the, there's no longer, you put the house on the sale, on the market for five hundred thousand, and it's bidding war for five fifty, five seventy-five. It's now closer to the five hundred thousand. But because the inventory is so low, that's what's keeping the values pretty high right now, even though the interest rates have climbed.
I think so, the next slide is going to show the real price data from Mass Association of Realtors, but it's important to remember, this is through the end of calendar year twenty-two. So when we're thinking of seven percent mortgage rates, that hadn't set in yet in these numbers.
And this is, this is showing the increase in the, in the sales, based on MLS, right?
Yes.
Yes, there it is, I'm sorry, my glasses are getting a little harder. CIP value growth, the other question you had, if you see. Industrial gas utility comes up, is forty-four percent of the growth. Landscaping, there was a couple of landscaping that brought up a million dollars of the growth. The telecoms is eighteen percent of the growth, and the gas utility is ten point six million, ten point six million and thirty-one percent of the growth.
So Dottie, to your point, the, when you look at the actual numbers, there was double-digit percentage growth in both industrial and personal property, but this pie chart shows the totality of all growth across those classes, and it was really carried by three or four subsects, so those were very, very large outliers. The reason we felt it was important to show that is, as the Board of Assessors have recommended, the shift going from one-one to one-point-two, we wanted to illustrate that the presence of those really heavy, large outliers making up the supermajority of growth in that class, pull, pull the mean that you see. So when you see the whole class going up twelve to nineteen percent, that's not a uniform experience shared by the overwhelming number of industrial and personal property bill payers, if that makes sense?
Right.
So that, that, those three or four things basically constitute the majority of CIP value growth.
So when you talk about industrial gas utilities and personal property tax gas utility, is that the, the actual value of the pipes going into the street? Like, could, are, are we looking at that saying, we put in a lot of gas lines or replaced a lot of gas lines last year? Is that the kind of property we're talking about, or?
Right, some of that, yes.
Okay. So that makes sense with all the roadwork we did in replacing?
And the expansion.
Yep.
And this is the value breakdown, showing that for CIP, over ten million dollars in value, there's five accounts which represent fourteen percent of the overall value of the commercial, industrial, personal property. Utilities, telecom represent four percent, the electric, six percent, gas was ten percent, and then all the other commu-, um, commercial, industrial, personal property parcels represent sixty-six percent. How the levy is calculated, you take last year's levy, you add the amended growth. This growth was basically, we have the TIF with shovel-shops, which this year, yay, is the last year. I have to estimate the value, and then, once the value is set, I need to adjust either a bait or revise assessment to be able to meet what the TIF amount is. So that subtotal is sixty-three million, four ninety-two, three seventy-eight. Two and a half percent increase, the two and a half percent levy increase is one million, five eighty-seven, three oh-nine. Growth this year was six hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars. So the total levy limit for FY twenty-four, well, the levy limit for FY twenty-four was sixty-five million, seven thirty-three, five sixty-one, with the debt exclusions for the schools, four million, two thirty-eight, two forty-four, total sixty-nine million, nine seventy-one, eight oh-five. The levy composition, the residential did increase. Went from eighty-nine point two four six one to eighty-nine point eight four seven five. The CIP decreased from ten point seven five three nine to ten one, ten point one five two five. So this slide is taking a look at what the surrounding communities and the core communities to Easton are. The economic comps, the mean is thirteen point three for residential and eighteen point three four in FY twenty-three. And the neighboring communities was fourteen forty-two for residential in twenty fifty-two. We were fourteen fifty-nine for residential and sixteen twenty-four for CIP. The mean, single-family tax bills among economic comps, this is showing, from the average, we are a hundred and ninety-nine dollars higher than the average of the comps. So the tax shift options, if we left everything at a single rate, the tax rate would be thirteen point six seven, plus or minus, because there's always some rounding sometimes. A shift of one point one, which is what we were at for FY twenty-three, would be thirteen fifty-one for residential and fifteen oh-three for CIP, commercial, industrial, personal property. A shift of one point one five would be a decrease, a tax rate for residential of thirteen forty-three, with a CIP tax rate of fifteen seventy-one. At one point two, which is recommended, would be thirteen thirty-six for residential and sixteen forty for. At one point two, which is recommended, would be thirteen thirty-six for residential and sixteen forty for CIP. For one point two-five, it would be thirteen twenty-eight for residential and seventeen oh-eight for the CIP. And at the max of one point five, it would be twelve point eight-nine for residential and twenty point five for commercial, industrial, personal property. Taking a tax bill comparison, looking at how it affects. So last year's median value for single-family was five twenty-four-eight. So the tax bill at fourteen fifty-nine, which is the third column, is seven thousand, six hundred, fifty-six dollars and eighty-three cents.
Just to be clear, that's the, the median tax bill, the most recently closed fiscal year.
Correct.
So we went with using median analysis here because we just came off the debt exclusion override where we were using median there. We used median with uh, the Blanche Ames Project. And so we wanted that five twenty-four, eight hundred should hopefully be a familiar-looking figure. That was the most current data at that point. So with the increase in values of twelve percent, uh, you then get into those next columns of what your options are depending on the shift.
The median for single-family for FY twenty-four increased to five eighty-eight, six hundred. So at a single rate, it would increase the tax bill three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and twenty-two cents to eight thousand, forty-six dollars and seventeen cents. At a split of one point one, which is what FY twenty-three was, it would increase the residential tax bill by two hundred and ninety-five dollars and sixteen cents. With a tax shift of one point one-five, it would increase the tax bill two hundred and forty-eight dollars and seven cents. With the shift at one point two, it would increase two oh-six, eighty-seven. And at one point two-five, it would increase one fifty-nine, seventy-eight. Looking at commercial, industrial, um, because there's such a large range, you have, when you're looking at commercial, industrial, the land is included also with that group. So you have values as low as five hundred dollars to as high as eighteen million or even higher. So what most communities do, they look at a range, a value of one million dollars to take um, take a look at the difference in um, tax bills. And later on, we do have a, we have a few values and we will look at what those changes were. So at a million dollars for FY twenty-three, the tax bill was sixteen thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. If we did a single shift, it would decrease two thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars to thirteen thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars. At a one point one shift, which is the FY twenty-three rate, it would decrease at one thousand, two hundred and ten dollars for a tax bill of fifteen thousand, thirty dollars. For a shift of one point one-five, it would decrease the commercial, industrial, uh, with the million-dollar value tax bill down five hundred and thirty dollars to fifteen thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars. At a one point two shift, it would increase the tax bill a hundred and sixty dollars to sixteen thousand, four hundred dollars. A one point two-five shift would increase the commercial, industrial of a million dollars in value, eight hundred and forty dollars. So if we look at some actual bills, and what I tried to do was pick some from different amounts. So um, these, the values did not change in FY twenty-three or uh, from FY twenty-three to twenty-four. So the FY twenty-three tax bill for a property at one million, two forty-nine-seven was twenty thousand, seven ninety-five, thirteen. At one point one, it would be a decrease of seven point four-five percent to eighteen thousand, seven eighty-two, ninety-nine. At a shift of one point one-five, it would be a decrease of three point two-six to nineteen thousand, six thirty-two, seventy-nine. Added uh, shift of one point two, it would be an increase of point um, one percent, uh, point ten percent to twenty thousand, four ninety-five, oh eight, which would be an increase of just under two hundred dollars. For property value in a range of three million, six forty-six, um, the change from FY twenty-three to FY twenty-four at the one point one, once again, would be a seven point four-five shift, which would, uh, would be a decrease of seven point four-five, going from fifty-nine to eleven oh-four to fifty-four, seven ninety-nine, thirty-eight. One fifteen, it would bring it down to fifty-seven thousand, two seventy-eight, sixty-six. And for a one point two shift, it would see an increase uh, to fifty-nine, seven ninety-four, forty, which would be an increase of five hundred and eighty dollars, basically. Uh, for six million, six thirty-one, three hundred, um, it would be a decrease, once again, from the one-ten, one-fifteen, and it would be an increase for the one point uh, two. Uh, that increase would be roughly twelve hundred dollars. For eighteen million, seventy-six thousand, six hundred, um, the one-ten, one point one-five would see a decrease and the one point two would see an increase. And that one would be about fifteen thousand dollars. But when you look at the million dollars, which is what most communities use, like I said, you're looking at an increase overall of one sixty with the uh, median value being two oh-seven, which puts it, makes it fairer um, throughout the town. That's it, thank you. Do you have any other questions?
Craig, Jen?
It's a lot of information.
So I think what, what the, what the challenge is, it's a delicate balance, right? So we have, we have to look at, if we, if we move the tax shift here or like, you know, squeaking the dial up a little bit, how much does that impact the, the average taxpayer?
Right.
At the same time, we're tweaking it this way, we're tweaking the um, commercial, industrial also to say, if we switch it, how much does it impact them? So in the original, um, if, if we keep the, the tax rate shift at one, the residential taxpayers are gonna have a significant tax increase and the commercial taxpayers are gonna have a, a pretty good decrease, which is not really the best situation. So by, by just, you know, tapping those numbers a little bit and getting them there, the one point two gives a reasonable amount of increase for the residential while an, an increase also for the commercial. We can't increase residential tax rates and have the commercial rates go, have the commercial values um, go down. So I think that the one point two is a very thoughtful tax shift. That, that is, you know, it's, any tax change is gonna be impactful in some way, but I think that this way, it's fair and it's reasonable for all the, you know, all the different classes.
That stood out to me as well. There was a minor increase for commercial CIP in that scenario, but I, I, I think that it was the right, right path and it's minor. There's a big driver for that, there's the values being what they are, right? Is the underlying driver of why we're shifting?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
The.
And the disparity between the values. Residential values are um, continuing to go up by over ten percent a year for now the third year straight. Um, and there's just no com- comparability in the CIP. We didn't touch on it so much tonight, but we did last year in part of this discussion. So we have a revow coming up for fiscal twenty-five, which is gonna take a really, really close look at commercial, industrial, personal property values. And i- in the interim period, in between those revows, which under the Municipal Modernization Act, went from every three years, every five years, there's some upside to that. The revows are expensive and it's, it's administrative, we burdened some. Uh, but on the downside, uh, so we moved into this five-year cycle, right? As a residential market took off like we've never seen. And so in those interim years, uh, a lot of commercial and industrial properties in particular, their, their valued, have net operating income, there's not a ton of comparable sales, there's not so many targets getting sold, right? So the, the interim year adjustments are much more modest and, and more stable. And if residential values were going up historic norms of what, two, three, four percent? It, it, east, a town like Easton is able to maintain a flat rate for as long as it did. But we're in this strange um, dynamic right now, ahead of the revow, uh, where we're three years in of double-digit percent growth for residential. So the shift is not, um, for the overwhelming majority of CIP bill payers is gonna result in a noticeable bill increase, even with the shift, some will still see a tax bill cut, right? But uh, it, it moderates the residential tax bill increase to probably one of the lowest that we've seen in years. And I think that's important, um, because this is one of the only fiscal years, although there's a, a very modest amount. There's very, very little change in the exempt debt levy of Easton in fiscal twenty-four.
Right.
Which was not the case for three or four years preceding with Blanche Ames and it will not be the case again with the next three or four years, fiscal twenty-five, six and seven, as the Police Fire Public Works comes on. So this is, I, I think, a good opportunity for the board and I appreciate the assessors' work on it as well, to look at and, and, and it seems like make a recommendation of how do we keep, I think even with residential, that was a sub-three percent. So I think it was two point six, um, a pretty modest increase. And, and by not going higher than one point two, there's still capacity between the room between one point two and one point five, as well as becoming revow, that's gonna take a fresh look at those CIP values. Uh, that'll give the board a lot of good data as we start doing those exempt bonds, starting the fiscal year twenty-five, to make sure that we're really dialing in those rate splits to try to be as thoughtful and careful as we can be to spread the tax impact of these projects out as we go.
And I think also, uh, being aware of, there was a slide up there that showed what our tax rates were compared to our surrounding and comparable communities. I think it still keeps us in a competitive landscape for our, our business.
Absolutely.
Commercial.
Even with the shift, the, our commercial, industrial, personal property rate is meaningfully lower. I was gonna say meaningfully to substantially, but that's pretty meaningless sounding, right? But it's a good, a good bit lower than uh, most of our contiguous neighbors uh, and certainly many of our economic comps. That's still something we'll make sure we include every single year because that's an important factor, you don't wanna overdo it. And um, you know, we didn't have a, a value comp there, but as we, folks in this room know, it's something that we've always been sensitive to. A lot of those comps have more commercial tax base because they had sewer and other infrastructure decades before we did. So it, it's important to the town's long-term growth plans that we maintain that competitive uh, value tax advantage for CIP. But we are in this, this strange dynamic where both boards have, for the first time, will take a shift, so.
And you're looking at, when you're looking at the, you know, the sales, you're looking at two different markets. I mean, commercial, industrial, you're looking at it as far as an investment. So it's based on what leases currently are for many of the, the parcels that are out there, the buildings that are there. So, and most of them are long-term leases, so they don't have a lot of change. So I mean, that's one thing too, that keeps the commercial, industrial kinda level.
I think I also picked up and stored in my memory banks for next year about this being the last year for the TIF.
Oh, yes.
So that's, that's gonna be some meaningful difference also. Do these numbers, does the diff, the district improvement financing have anything to do with these numbers or?
No.
Uh, no.
Okay.
No.
They, it, it has an impact on the budget.
Yes.
Right, because we net out what those funds are into that segregated fund for the infrastructure improvements there, but it doesn't impact the rate.
Okay.
Any growth from that district, fifty percent of it goes into the diff.
Okay.
Until we hit a.
Bucket, I would say.
But it's all part of the total levy.
Right.
Right.
That you see here.
Um, we have two of the assessors here, did you wanna add or contribute anything or? Okay, excellent. All right, well, if that's it on the questions, um, I guess the vote will be to vote to.
Robbie, is there like a super, I'm sorry, Dottie, I feel like in years past, we had like this hyper-specific motion with like.
When you make the motion, you wanna make the motion that you set the tax shift at one point two.
There's nothing anymore about the LA something portal?
No, we don't have to do that anymore, that changed. They keep changing that stuff. No, you don't have to do that.
I think we had to re-vote it. I'm sorry, so, so it's just for she, the CIP shift at one point two.
All right, Craig, did you remember all that?
So I'm gonna, it's gonna, we're gonna shift the tax levy to one point two for residential?
Uh, no, I think it's to vote the shift for the CIP.
To vote the tax shift at one point two.
Thanks, Robbie.
You don't have to specify anything because it's, it's all one.
And do you have to say it's for fiscal year twenty-four in the motion?
I would say it, yeah.
All right.
Pressure's on you, Craig.
No, the pressure's on me. So again, shift the tax levy.
Nope, the ta, you're, we're gonna vote on a tax shift of one point two for fiscal year twenty-four.
Okay, so I moved to shift, the ta, tax shift to one point two for fiscal twenty-four.
Second, Stacy.
So that's Bodger and Stacy, all in favor, unanimous, terrific.
I was gonna channel my colleague, Mark Lamb, who's last year had some serious concerns about resi, the residential rates and helping people out, particularly the lower economic folks in the town. So I hope he's watching, so he knows that we are thinking of him.
Well, that's why we did put in the one point two-five to show that even if you went to one point two-five, you weren't getting enough to help the residential and it was really increasing the commercial, industrial, personal property to the point that you could be hurting on that, those classes.
Yeah.
So that, that's, it's trying to, every time I went to a class for assessing, it's all about fairness, they keep saying. So it's all about trying to be fair to everybody.
Well, that's why I started with saying it's a delicate balance. If you move this just a little bit and you move this, it can really offset the numbers. So thank you for being thoughtful in your approach to looking at those rates and uh, making it easy for us to make a good decision.
Thank you.
All right.
Our colleagues on the board as well.
Thank you. Okay, we are looking at the acceptance of minutes for November sixth, November thirteenth and November fifteenth.
So move, Bodger.
Second, Stacy.
Bodger and Stacy, all in favor, unanimous. Um, approval only of executive session minutes for November sixth, twenty twenty-three?
So move, Bodger.
Second, Stacy.
Bodger and Stacy, all in favor, unanimous. Town administrator notes.
Uh, sure, uh, wanna just thank the Easton Lions Club uh, for putting on an amazing holiday festival. Uh, I think they're thirty-six. I know they worked very hard to bring back the full two-day festival. Mother Nature got in the way of some of those events, but they still uh, held some indoor activities uh, on day two, which is much appreciated. Uh, specifically, I wanna thank Rob Goodrich, President, John Morgan, who I believe was the leader of the festival planning committee, um, as well as Fire Department, DPW, Town Departments, Ames Street Library, Oaks and Memorial Hall, a ton of different community groups came out, whether they were vendors or folks volunteering just to help out. It was a really awesome uh, day, it was great to see hundreds of people out there and it's a, it's a wonderful event. So thanks to all those folks.
It was great, it was a full, full three-day event, starting at Friday night, so. Craig?
I have nothing.
Nothing?
Nothing, that's fine.
I have nothing to add either?
I just wanna add that um, I attended the Brockton Area ARC, um, grand opening and ribbon-cutting last week and it was really wonderful to have them in our community. They support people with special needs and it's an amazing facility. A lot of the families were there, the young people, and it was really very special. And thinking about people that have children or family members that they love that do have differing uh, needs, to be able to have them feel comfortable that your loved one is in a place that's safe and that they're well-cared for is really important. And I came away with a real strong feeling about that, so welcome to them.
Day, is it, it's a day program?
It's a day program, so, it's an expansion of the Brockton Area ARC. Brockton also expanded and then moved this part for medically fragile patients or some of the, some of the um, the clients there, so. And Senator Timmeltie was there also.
Yes.
So that's a good segue, we're just wrapping up. And uh, if you wanted to uh, come and say hi and public participation, come on up.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I will be very brief.
And I will be very brief.
Sure.
But I thank you very much, and that was an outstanding event, as we all know, the ARC does wonderful work, and I'm very excited that they have come to Eastern with their dehabilitation.
Right.
It's been terrific, and, uh, you know, we were both very impressed. And Ms. Stacy, Mr. Bodger, Mr. Reed, thank you very much. Uh, very briefly, I just wanted to, uh, provide the board with an update.
Sure.
Senate Bill two-five-one-five, which is the home rule petition, the town meeting voted on back in the fall, that, uh, thank you as a board, and, uh, Mr. Reed, and obviously cheerful Janetti, and Ms. Stacy, and Mr. Bodger for reaching out ahead of time. We were able to be proactive and vetted with Senate counsel. But I'm here to report the bill has been filed by myself, and I've invited Representative Cassidy and Representative Dougherty to sign on as co-sponsors.
Oh, great.
It has been admitted because it, uh, came in as a late file, which is any time after February at the outset of a session, so that would have been February of two thousand twenty-three. Anything bill that's filed after that is what's called a late file, in which case both the Rules Chair and the Senate and House have to admit it, which they have. And now it's, uh, in front of the Committee on Revenue. So every bill receives a hearing, of course, as we are well aware. So in short order, the bill will have a hearing. I've been working with the committee chairs to expedite that process. And as soon as it does, of course, I will notify the board and notify the citizenry of the town and anybody who would like to participate in the hearing. In terms of offering testimony, either written, virtually, or in person, I'll make sure to facilitate it. And of course, I will be there to testify as well.
All right, great.
So just wanted to give a quick update. I thank you very much. I warmed my hat to hear, uh, the board talk about the ARC opening in Eastern. It's, uh, it was a wonderful moment, and a lot of folks, uh, not just in this town, but throughout the region, will benefit from the expansion of the ARC. They do wonderful work with people who live with differing abilities in supporting, uh, citizens and the families.
Well, I wasn't able to be i, in town this weekend, so I wasn't able to get to the Lions Club Festival, but I did see pictures online, and I saw you there in a winter coat.
Yes.
So I had to look quickly because I didn't see a suit jacket, but, uh, but I did see you there, so I know you attended, and thank you, uh, you, you're very, uh, you pop up at all our events, so we're happy to see you there and, and glad you were able to spend some time in Eastern this weekend.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm a big believer when folks are doing, uh, good and positive things, of which the Eastern Lions are all about, that it's im, very important to support them. And I know this board feels the same way, so, uh, and I also had a lot of fun while doing it.
Yeah.
But, uh, the whole weekend with the winter concert, uh, which was sponsored, of course, by, uh, the Lions and, uh, Northeastern Savings Bank, I believe.
Yeah.
And I believe Doug King was involved as well as the sponsor, and The Grange, uh, and I believe, well, Shovel Town Brewery, of course, was involved.
Yeah.
And, uh, the Lions just did a wonderful job with the whole holiday weekend.
Yeah, they really did.
And, uh, to your point, uh, yes, I was dressed casually on Saturday, and it does throw people off a little bit, uh, but I figured it was okay to dress casually on Saturday.
I didn't know, you might have had a suit jacket on under the winter coat. I couldn't, I couldn't predict that.
I always keep one hanging in my car. I do, I do, but I didn't have to take it out on Saturday. But, uh, the whole weekend, the holiday weekend, I think is a great microcosm of the greatness that is this town. People coming together and doing really good things for one another and for the entire region.
Yep.
So I thought it was fantastic.
It's a nice way to kick off the season, so.
Yes, yes, it was. And I had a lot of fun while doing it. And, uh, also, congratulations are in order, of course, as I know you're very happy about the two-state championship teams from Oliver Ames.
Yes.
With our cross-country, our women's team from the cross-country Division One, and of course, Eastern Oliver Ames, uh, state champs, uh, Division Two for the boys soccer.
Right.
I think it's fantastic. We might have to, uh, start referring to Eastern as Title Town.
Well, I don't think anybody would be hurt by that.
Not at all. Uh, in consultation with, uh, our superintendent and, uh, the chair of our school committee, I've had discussions already with the assistant athletic director about bringing, uh, both teams into the State House.
Oh, that's great.
To celebrate their accomplishments.
Fantastic.
Celebrate their accomplishments, and, uh, I believe it'll be a great celebration for, uh, our student athletes who deserve the very best here in town.
Great, thank you.
So no, thank you. It's, uh, it's a privilege to work for you and with you, and, uh, thank you for allowing me to address the board tonight.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
And thank you, Kathy, for being here as well.
Yes.
Always good to see you.
I'd like to, to thank Senator Timmeltie and his staff as well, the, the, the bill file, the home rule petition, that's the senior tax relief package that was passed as part of the, uh, successful police fire DPW project, and so, um, you, all of your staff, and of course yourself, Senator, were great on the front end, making sure that that was pre-vetted so that could get filed quickly, so we can make sure that's in place as the borrowing, uh, comes online, as we were just talking about in the tax hearing, so thank you.
Oh, thank you. And I was remiss, thank you very much, Mr. Reed. The official title of the bill is, "An Act Authorizing the Town of Eastern to Establish a Means-Tested Senior Citizen Property Tax Exemption." That is the official name, just for the records.
Great.
Thank you.
And I am very excited about, uh, hosting, uh, teams from Oliver Ames. I think it's great, uh, you know, right away, uh, that day, I had various, uh, parents reaching out to me to tell me all about it. Saturdays and Sundays, as you know, are generally workdays for me, but, uh, in between, I had, uh, the superintendent, who referred to herself as a proud mama tiger, and, uh, various parents were very proud as well, reach out. And I had a great conversation with Jen Starr last week about it, and, uh, Superintendent Cabral put me in touch with her assistant athletic director at Oliver Ames, just start the process of, uh, bringing the student athletes in to celebrate their championship. So I think it'll be great.
Very exciting.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And of course, I'll, I'll inform the board, and, uh, obviously, parents, grandparents, friends and fans are all invited to come to the State House that day.
Terrific.
So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Senator, thank you for your investment in our town. I very much appreciate it.
Well, thank you. I, I love working for this town, and I love working with you folks, and I, I thank you for being great partners at the local level. And, uh, you know, a very Merry Christmas and a Happy Hanukkah to everybody in the town of Eastern. I hope everybody enjoys a wonderful holiday season. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And a Happy New Year. Thank you all.
All right, thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Well, that brings us to the end of the agenda, and all we have left is an executive session under purpose six of Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, subsection twenty-one A, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property of land situated at Sixty-Nine Howard Street and Three-Sixty Washington Street if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. So we are going to adjourn into executive session, not to return to open session, so that'll be the end of this meeting. And we will take a roll call vote to, um, vote to, uh, to enter into executive session.
Marjorie, yes?
Stacy, yes?
And full Janetti, yes.
I'm sorry.
Did I do it wrong?
There, you need a motion and a second to begin the vote, and then the yeses of each person.
You're right.
Move to go into executive session.
Second.
So that's Bodger and Stacy moving to go into executive session.
Marjorie, yes?
Stacy, yes?
Full Janetti, yes. Excellent. Do we?
Sorry for being so particular.
No, that's fine, and, uh, usually, I don't know why I'm a little off on that one now. I was thinking in my head, do we need to make a motion to adjourn this meeting? So that's just all wrapped into that.
Correct.